And then everything else just shifted down accordingly based on the same leads and munks that we previously discussed. So basically that would have, if we start survey in June, then that would have bid opening and contract award in May. Basically May is time of year.
I think that's, that's pretty close to when we did it last time. We did it, I believe, in April. And it took them two months to get their, all their equipment here and everything squared away and traffic figured out.
Yeah, that's right. We stand there to get all their bottoms in place and...
Yeah, two months. I think we started, we started in like July. It was when the first guy showed up chewing up the, whatever you call it, the...
Milling.
Yes, exactly. Milling started like in July.
Like I said, this was just preliminary findings. We'll be getting the final detailed report from the geotech engineer next week and then we'll certainly pass them on.
So you didn't make, there's no new information on construction as far as the timeline, as far as the, how long is it gonna take them to do the job? Everybody's still pretty...
Yeah, eight months is still, I'm not sure, yeah. That's enough, gives them enough time that you're not affecting the bid price by, I mean, you can always tell them whatever you want that to be, but you get it. We're actually going through that right now with a lot of projects we've got bidding that we're getting feedback that it's a, it's a tight schedule and the bid may be affected. So, you know, we're adjusting the schedule so that we don't, you know, drive the prices up for bidding potentially.
So say we decided to go with seven inches in the entire town, how much of that at time was...
Without a bidding?
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I assume, I hate moving that, I feel like many of these years never assume anything. They'll slip form probably a half of the time of the road. I don't know how they did it or where, did they form at all or by name, they formed, they formed at all. So then we never want to tell the contractor how to do his job and that will also affect. But if, if they do slip form it, then you set the street down instead of six and seven. And if they do form in four, they just buy two by eights, so two by six and so it's, it doesn't affect the, the time to do the job whatsoever.
So the next action we would take would be approve a, the survey tasking, right?
Correct.
You already have that? We have, we have the...
Yeah.
We have, we have the, the one that had all the tasks.
Yeah, so the contractor again has kind of broken up and made new tasks, so you could sign off each task individually. So yeah, if you just want to approve the, the survey, then that number is still good and still, is still the same. So if you could, that would be, yes, our recommendation, the next task would be the, the survey, get that started. Really can't, can't really do much more with what the geos, once we get the final report. We need the survey to kind of use the tools that we get from the geotech to identify where those different moisture protection or perp agent recommendations are going to be made. So we're really need the survey to be able to start that design and evaluation process too.
Any questions?
How quickly does that bidding phase go for you guys? So you guys got about nine weeks, right, from start to finish?
For the bidding here?
Yeah.
So I love that, there's a little bit of room to, to tighten that down. So there's certain state laws that you have to follow, like you have to be bid or publicly bid in the newspaper for, for two weeks. So that, you have to advertise, sorry. And so typically then, once advertised, a couple of weeks, we like to give the contractor a week. And then we, we have a pre-bid meeting in here. You don't have to do a pre-bid meeting, you can skip that. And then, we recommend it just so we can see who the contractors are interested in it and then also kind of, if there's anything unique about the project, to make sure that everyone knows about it. That it's not buried in the place that's somewhere. But that can tie, it ties it up and then we put a questions deadline because you'll just get them up right enough until the, you don't necessarily have to have a questions deadline. I just, I don't want the contractors coming back. If somebody, if one contractor is asking a question the day before the bid, I don't want to create a scenario where there's someone has perceived to have, to have an unfair advantage, so to speak. So I like my questions deadline by the week before the bid opening and then allow a week for any, that being come out just so everyone's on the same page and is bidding, you know, the same apples to apples information. So that gets, that can, you can probably bring that down in four weeks if you really want to accelerate it. That just gives you a kind of similar degree of time for the contract community to take it together.
So Todd, just to add a little digger into this call here. So now that we've figured out, or somebody's walked in the door and said, they're gonna put three houses on Green Meadow, which isn't on this plan, right? We can put it in, right? It's not. So Green Meadow now enters the picture, a new street. We're, we're, that's okay now. We haven't, we're not committed to anything right now, right?
Right.
We probably use the boring results from, from this side of town or just, we have it all, we have the next street over, right?
I think there's one close enough that our geotech, and we have other geotech boards, you know, close enough with the first end that I think we could make a reasonable assumption for Green Meadow. There wouldn't be additional geotech.
The traffic is gonna be minimal on that street, but, but I, I think, we have, we have, I have to talk to the council, but I think there's a fair chance that street's gonna get added to the mix. But we've read, how recent the point of you tearing up documents and cursing at us, it's starting over yet, right?
Right, we would like.
The meters, you know, you can't...
It would be good if the, if the, once the survey gets started to get them, just if you want to do that, so it's all done in one...
We should tell, we should figure that out concurrent with the survey.
I think that's fair. Probably should plan on relooking at your numbers and include that in the survey. Because that's gonna be...
We'll talk to the survey and just get it updated a little.
Yeah, but it's only 400 feet. It's not, it's not real.
Yeah.
It might, yeah. I think it's fair just to figure out what the additional cost would be for survey.
And you're a preliminary and auto designs are going to include all that drainage stuff that we talked about over on the, care over there.
Todd, Joe?
Thanks, sir.
How much was the survey? Or did we already offer it to a full contractor?
No, we've been doing it task by task.
Is it within your signing authority or are we...
I think it's like seventy.
Seventy, no.
Seventy, what I thought, yeah. Well, I could, it took a budget. I don't remember, but...
I, I don't want to get hung up between meetings and have to come back.
Well, I think, I think, yeah, I...
I can't remember how to...
Yeah. Yeah. There's no action on, on this, on the agenda, so. All right, sir?
All right. Thank you. We'll all do the survey for that. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, we'll, 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 I'll do the task order soon.
Okay.
We'll get back to you in a bit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next time out, I, I'll do, make sure I...
That's always lethal.
Lethal.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have consideration of a water use policy. It's a, this is something that I, so the idea with this thing was that it's really a... What I'd like to do is, at the start of the summer, before we get into the heat of the summer, to kind of establish normal water. Let's try and get everybody on board. Let's start out with three days a week. And if everything works out fine, then just leave it, rather than people kind of spontaneously just deciding right now, if you don't get rain for a week, I'm just gonna water five days a week or something. So it, it, it has no enforcement mechanism. It's basically a voluntary program to say, please, with all of the irrigation, just do it three days a week. Nobody else, you can wash a boat, you can do whatever, but let's not go from zero to 100 miles an hour like we do every year. We're, you know, we don't get rain for two weeks, everybody just pounds us at once. And it's not that we can't supply the water, it's just there's no predictability, you know, we, it's literally, there's no stability. And so it's kind of, it's kind of a middle ground between, you know, can we educate people and try and get them to do the right thing initially? And say, look, if you don't, then there is an ordinance coming, you know, they're, they're, we're in the, we're in the emergency backed by an ordinance, backed by fines, backed by, you know, it's, it's real. So anyway, it was just a stab in the dark that I threw out there. I mean, I don't know. I mean, you might think it's, since it's not enforceable, but it's not an ordinance. I don't know.
I, I like the idea of being a little more proactive. I mean, I think it's Labor Day, or I'm sorry, Memorial Day, to Labor Day, we already go into a, like a water awareness. But I, I think it'd be wise to start out with some sort of even odd three days a week or whatever it is. Because inevitably it's gonna be July or August and we start tasking the system and get there just... I mean, we have made the improvements, so I don't think there's any, I think this is just being cautionary, right? We've lowered the wells, we've had past experience, but I think we're in good shape. But even then, I mean, we've had a lot of rain, we don't know if the rest of the summers, you know, will find.
Well, a lot of cities do actually have enforced, like, day one in the summer.
All year long.
All year, all year long.
My goal is to kind of, is hopefully, you know, like your, your water, you'll take three days a week irrigation system and it's green. So even though it gets hot, your yard's fine, so you don't, you don't go out there and jack with it. You know, because that's when people don't know what they're doing and they do 25 minutes times 16 zones times, you know...
You're just wanting people to be conscious essentially is what you're, just brain like to it, try to prevent what happened last year.
Honestly, I don't know a town that doesn't have a fishery, right?
Yeah.
I mean, they're, I mean, they all do at some level and a lot of them are pretty stringent, a lot more than, than what's in this document.
I agree. I'm happy with the water system, so you know, it doesn't relate to Texas, but it makes sense. We've had that issue last year, you know, it's Texas.
Well, it does, I mean, it does affect everybody. If we run out of water and we get to boil water or something crazy, it affects everybody.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're kind of like, everything's great or we're trumped. That's the way the emergency ordinance works, right? There is no middle ground. It's like, all systems go, do whatever you want, and then crisis. And I'm trying to, I don't really like that.
Are you just gonna resent this in your VA's life?
Exactly. Just right now, I, I can't say, hey, this is our, this is what we want you to do. I'm speaking as myself. But I, I, I hope that we as a policy, that, you know, we educate people starting in this timeframe, you know, we, we try and regiment a little bit more. There are things that you guys don't know that we do, like, you know, lowering the electrodes in the well. We have policies behind the scenes that we do every summer where we adjust the fill lines. And Daryl's learning a lot of this where, you know, behind the scenes, we're manipulating the water system to prepare for, and this is just a more visible one on the end user.
And it also does help to bring it to mind because I think a lot of people just don't think about it since we've never had any real restrictions. They just think, ah, we've got plenty of water and...
I mean, I like that. I think you're 100% correct on that. Ultimately, at the end of the day, what people care about is, you know, kind of use the homes, kind of wash their boat, kind of wash their golf cart, whatever. We're not restricting that necessarily. But at the end of the day, I mean, you, you drive down Lakewood Village sometimes, it's, you know, we've got five inches of rain coming down and you see people sprinkler system going on. It's like, yeah, you know.
I saw yesterday, I ran through it down toward what in Lakewood Village, I saw two sprinklers.
When it's out of sudden, it's out of mind, right? Everybody's got a little box in their garage somewhere, you, you know, it's programmed and, you know, those rain detector things go out often and, you know, it is what it is. So I think the little awareness gap is probably good. I think it's good.
All right. What is it? I don't know.
It's a consideration.
It's a consideration. Okay, so I need, this does need a motion.
To make a motion to approve the water use policy?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, very good. Well, thank you, guys. I, you know, I think it'll be good. Okay, next up, we have the MDD comprehensive controls. So this is something that Matt's been working on and I took a stab at kind of writing some, some talking points. Basically, I, I think what the, what the goal was, was to allow the MDD some autonomy, just like we do in the city. Like, we have a financial controls in the city where I'm allowed to sign things and spend money up to certain limits. And it's something that our auditors wanted. The auditors wanted to have financial controls, make sure that I don't go out and, you know, buy a Lamborghini that was out here during the profit swap. So the, so, so the, the auditors really liked us having our controls to limit what we can do. Part of that was to check signers, like we approved tonight, is having that control structure. But you don't have that same umbrella over the MDD. It's kind of always been, you know, the city has been looking over the MDD shoulder all the time, kind of getting involved. And I think we've reached the time now, the MDD's got significant amount of money, they're doing well financially. They have the ability now to actually take on projects and really, you know, move forward. That we want to give them that ability without us having to keep stopping them every month and vote on everything they're doing. Give them a little bit of autonomy, they have a budget, you know, as long as they're, just like I am, they're within the budget, you know, let them, let them spend their money. So this was, this was some numbers I put on paper. They're not, they're just placeholders. So the idea, I think, being that, you know, Matt, you guys worked on, you know, some of the picnic and more of those kind of things. You have better feel for, you know, the dollar values, but the idea would be, you know, you don't want to wait a month to come in here, you know, because we gotta prove a bounce house.
Yeah.
You know, so do you have some ideas on, I think the numbers up above there, it was like two grand was, you know, you could spend on any, on any... Was that what it was? No, it's 5,000. Is that too big?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's right line, you know.
That's about what we talked about here, like the MDD.
Yeah.
How much, so we had to...
The reality is the MDD, I mean, being on it for a few years, I think this is a really good thing because there's nothing, when you can make quick decisions and you've got money and it's within your budget, to have to kind of stop, call meeting, get us together, then have to give it to the, I mean, it's a little bit strapping at times. So I think having some level of control, especially within the means of a budget, I think would be very beneficial to the MDD board and save a lot of people some time too.
That's probably a pretty good number.
Yeah, and, and obviously with the MDD...
It's just a president, right? You have the vice president.
Yeah, it's a president, right. So the idea would be that, you know, if it's anything bigger than that, it's probably Rocky Point.
Sure, right.
And something's cracked out, the well's failed or something, you know. But, but we, we really want the, you know, the MDD to be able to accomplish its things, you know, the pic, whatever, you know, the picnics, the, the events and all of that. And I think if the MDD, if the boards approved the budget, then, you know, you shouldn't have to call a special meeting of the MDD to authorize the MDD president to... The bounce house came in $50 more than what we thought, so you got a special meeting. That, that's crazy. And I also think this would be helpful because I'd like the MDD to meet quarterly rather than monthly. And I think as the frequency, because I, I don't know the board needs to meet as frequently, but it's quarterly, you need to have some autonomy to be able to, be able to accomplish business when you're not in session.
Yeah, like my team wasn't good.
You know, when you're asking for volunteers to serve on the boards, you know, it's always, it's a tension, right? We really need to serve on the boards. We need people, like, you know, it really, it's hard to...
Yeah.
It's hard to then say, oh, and here's the commitment, you know? Clint, you have anything to add?
No, I just...
I'm gonna draw my cross now.
No, I just want to make sure I remember, I mean, created through this before, but yeah, this is all the, all related to the, to the town. So yeah, it's pretty, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Now, this is only a, a discussion item. This is just to hash out, just, you know, everybody's ideas and then I think Matt and I would take a stab at, you know, rewriting it for consideration for, for next time.
I think they're running, we, we eliminated, or like if they were gonna do an agreement or anything along those lines, they'd still have to come to us, right? They couldn't sign contracts, things like that.
Right, you can't do a multi-year commitment.
Right.
I, I don't know what that would be, but that's kind of a... You don't want to get in a situation where somebody signs a contract and then we have to rescind the contract. That, that gets really, that's not appetizing thing, right, when you have to do that. But, you know, in personnel, I mean, I made that up. We have the same kind of thing in the city. You know, like if you want to hire somebody to help out with some event or, you know, or, I don't know what it would be, but just you have the ability to spend some money on people, if you need some money. Linda, you're the last person on the MDD that's still here. Did those numbers seem pretty good to you?
They, it's, I'm, that's what we discussed the last meeting, so I mean, everything looks good. So, yeah.
Again, it's just a discussion only item. Matt and I bring it forward and then we can see a much cleaner version.
That's right.
That's right. Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have discussion, what, what'd you say?
He's going red, so...
Next up, is a discussion of the Rocky Point Emergency Water Management Ordinance. I believe Mr. Farage is working on this.
Yeah.
Mr. Eric.
So the idea behind this was that we would create an ordinance similar to what, what the town has. I mean, we have that nice water system over there in Rocky Point. And the, the concept was to put some police parameters around it. You know, we had the one little hiccup last year, you know, water system went out and Matt and I were kind of scrambling last night. People had a lot of questions and we were going from house to house and it was quite eventful. So I think the idea of getting at least an ordinance, actually something that they can see, that we can see that the town has, that the MDD has, is completely very beneficial. In fact, it's probably something we should, you know, a little bit ago. So I took a stab at, at writing some of this and I think we need to get this in place sooner rather than later.
You know, I don't know, you know, many years ago, I don't, Clint, remember this, they had this ord, an auto ordinance for TXU. It was like code pink, yellow, green, purple, brown. I mean, it was, it was crazy, like, you know, if you have 80% capacity, 60, 70, 40, it's unbelievable. It's like, you're either in trouble or you're not. You know, and I, I didn't run the numbers, but you know, Rocky Point, it's almost like, look, you've got six days worth of water in a tank. That, you know, you're either in trouble or you're in great shape. There is no gradation of, you know, you're only producing 80% of usage. It's like your average usage is 5,000 gallons, the well can put out 40,000 a day. You don't really have a supply-demand imbalance. You know, like, see all the categories we had and that was...
Yeah, and some of that, that was all kind of, like Mark said, their model. So it doesn't, their model to meet their criteria doesn't really fit how they operate and where our system really is. You'll find, you'll kind of go from one to five.
I mean, that's the reality.
And that's part of the discussion we had earlier, right? Let's try to, instead of getting, skip that, that leapfrog and start kind of soft and get people trying to, try and correct their behavior and then we see, right? We'll see it in our water consumption, we'll see it in the water bills, it's just a spike, it's five spikes.
Yeah.
Boy, I mean, quadruples in this number, so.
And we, I mean, the, the Rocky Point doesn't quite have that drastic of an issue either. I mean, there, it's a little bit more even keel for us in terms of water usage. But I, I still think it's something.
I don't think they have any worse, I don't think they have any sprinkler systems over there.
This is mostly combined, it's just been combined with the TXU regulations, unfortunately.
And so I, I didn't know...
Operations doesn't really fit there.
Yeah, I didn't know with the financial tone, but you know, this is one system where simply, simply checks the box.
This is.
We have that, but ours is more com, more complex.
I think we should just, yeah, we should, we should match what we're doing over there.
I mean, yeah, we, we originally started going through this using the Lakewood Village, I mean, cut out, you know, a bunch of things that today this doesn't really apply.
Should be on line area, I would think. You're either in trouble or you're not.
Sure, I, I think, I think the closer you keep the Lakewood Village, the easier it is to maintain for just the documents there. Operationally, you're still gonna, I mean, the way it's set up, you can hit the trigger points from zero, you're not producing water, you leapfrog from one to five. From, just operationally, from managing, it's the same people managing both, it probably should be very similar. So even though Rocky Point could probably be much simpler, it might be cuter to keep it, something.
So Eric, this is gonna be one of those problems, do we have signage? Do we have, do we have a mechanism? We, we have signs, right, Clint? We don't have anything that says code red or red. We don't, we don't, there's no mechanism.
No, we have this, yeah, we have the signs, but they say Lakewood Village. I don't think that would matter.
That's true, yeah, and we had the...
The way the sign is, it's just an insert too, just kind of an insert.
Because I think part of what we did was, we, we had the ordinance, but then you had to get, you know, the signage. You can't have code purple when the ordinance says, you know, so we kind of had to put the two together. So that would be like a next step, I guess, for...
So one of the things we've talked about in the MDD was signage. And we, we were looking at signage for like some of the tanks to get it out there a little bit nicer as well. We could incorporate that, or the MDD could incorporate that with...
Like, Clint, now, if it went to code red, the well ate itself. There's no, there's no quick and dirty way to...
Matt and I printed pieces of paper and walked them to work. Which wasn't quick, easy, I mean, we posted stuff up there on the water, but I mean, how many people are driving down that road looking at the wa, you know? I don't think people are looking at it.
I'm not sure if people really know which system they're on.
No, they don't, no.
So Clint, you don't think our current messaging...
I think it would. I think it would, but I think it's, it'd probably be best to duplicate that so you have it in the building over there. So you have a problem, you just get it from that building. The temperature is gonna be the same as it is over here, so if they're having a problem, there's a good chance, you know, we could hit the problems at the same time.
But I know there, the last issue was a TXU problem, right?
Oh, true. They are different powers as well.
That is a different promise.
I, I would think it's easier to have them stored over there.
I, I agree.
Can we communicate, Matt?
No.
You can't be worse off.
I'm just, I'm saying, that would be the ideal way to get out, like, an emergency, like, hey.
You're gonna reach a hair.
Yeah, but it's better than, than putting a piece of paper on a sign going, hey.
The city of the million system has some email addresses for, for some people. I don't think we're gonna have.
That's true, I think we do both, but you could, I mean, we can do both, but you can make an effort to say, hey, let's try to put some Google address. Lots of people do email, you know.
And right, maybe there's a, there's an education opportunity here, right?
Yeah.
In their water bills, tell them, make sure they understand what system, come up with your signage and then start that little campaign and say, hey, this is, we have to look for the sign, this is where the sign will be placed. Like, they're having a problem with only one pilot is walking over to the water.
Take notes.
I am. I'm getting sunned.
Anything else? Eric? Good?
No.
Yeah, it's a discussion item, so, so if you're gonna continue to edit it and bring it next time?
Sure.
So just so you guys know, typically when we do an ordinance, it's a discussion only the first time. We provide a chance to have their say and it can't be voted on. And then the second time, it's, it's either up and down. I mean, you can still table it, but traditionally, you know. So right now, if, if anybody has hesitations that you don't want him moving forward, this is when you say it, rather than having him spend the effort to redo the ordinance, just pretty it up and commit and... So do the work. All right, very good, thank you. All right, next up, we have discussion of municipal court record ordinance, and this is Linda. This is a discussion item. We've discussed it a couple of times, but not with Eric and Matt here. So that's why, ordinarily, we have already voted on this by now, but with Matt and Eric being, you, I don't know if you're familiar with this topic, so Linda.
So the, the quick and dirty, easy way to explain this is, right now, we're not a court of record, which means anybody can appeal anything out of our court and go to county. And we, we are at the mercy and the whim of the county about deciding our cases. That means also they keep the fines. So we spend the time, the effort, the energy to focus on cases that are important to the town and then the town has the ability to reverse it and have no standing. If we're, if we become a court of record, then the only way that cases are appealed out of our court and to the county is for a... and to county is for situations of judicial error. And those are fairly uncommon. That means that would stay here in our court, it's easy to become a court of record, we just need to provide a way to electronically document, record all of the court proceedings. And that can be as elaborate as we want it to be and as simple as a tip, a tip of court. This ordinance, the council has reviewed several times. It's pretty standard, straightforward, there's nothing complicated about it. It's gone to the city attorney and this is the final version.
Rick also saw it, right?
Yeah, our judge is also seeing that and he didn't have any concerns about it. Any appeals that are, are, if, if the defendant did want to appeal and that was filed, they have to, the transaction of the court, so the court proceeding would have to be transcribed. And the defendant bears the cost of that. Would they pay for the court of court?
So, so again, the problem that we have is that not being a court of record, if we decide that, you know, your grass is three feet tall and we're going to mow it and you commit to court and you say, I don't care, you know, find me, I don't care, I'm going to appeal it to Denton County. And Denton goes, your, your, goes to Denton County, Denton County starts over, like we didn't exist. Denton County says, what is it? I don't care about your tall weeds of grass. Have a nice day. Nothing, we get nothing. We paid for our attorney, we paid our judge, we ordinance mowed it, we have nothing to show for it. Because Denton County's priorities, fair enough, are not necessarily priorities of Lakewood Village. And that's us, that's just the way life is, that's the way they are. If we recorded it as a court of record, a lot of attorneys won't take the appeal. Because you got to find a reversible error. The judge has to make an error in the law. Not that you don't like what the judge did, not that you don't agree with the judge, it's got to be a plain reversible error. So most attorneys, if you went to them and said, I got, you know, I got tall weeds of grass, we can appeal this, they're going to ask you, are they a court of record? When you say yes, okay, $5,000 to my retainer. Because now I got to search the record, I got to find some sort of, you know, legal problem. It's much more difficult. And most of them will do it, because it's just not, there's no reversible error. Whereas it's, you know, so that's the issue we're trying to get ahead of. Is that, not that we have a court alive, but it's a hole that we have, that we need to fix the hole before something dramatic happens, right? And then we're stuck trying to chase our tail when something major happens. And there's nothing we can do about it, so. Does that kind of make sense?
That's, yeah. So if you become a court of record, just a sheer curiosity, I mean, is there a, like, retention factor that goes into how often we have to have, like, hold on to specific records or?